Like to go ahead and report on our closed session.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. With respect to closed session for the special meeting, item A was not discussed, item B was discussed and will be continued at the council's next meeting, item C was discussed, no reportable action was taken with either item B or item C. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead and adjourn our special meeting. Now I would like to call to order our regular meeting for January 21st, 2020. Can I get a roll call, please?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Mann?
Here.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Here.
Councilmember Yu?
Here.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Here.
Mayor Fish?
Here. We're gonna start off tonight with our invocation from Pastor Darrell Kelty, Community of Christ Church located at 9468 Broadway, Temple City. If everyone could please stand and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. Boy Scout Troop 161 will lead the pledge. Scouts presenting the flags are Senior Patrol Leader Gerald Dew, Joshua Sue, Daniel Sue, Lucas Tuitt, and Duncan Vraga. Troop 161 will be participating in a Snow Sports Merit Badge Day on February 2nd in Snow Valley.
Thank you very much. I so much enjoy coming here every month or so. Our divine Creator, we thank you so very much for this world that you have created. We thank you for this beautiful day and for the promise that provides warmth and light for all who live here. We thank you that we're able to live in this community where we might enjoy the rights and benefits of a free people. For this reasons, we were offered this invocation this evening that our directed officials might indeed look for that best in this community, to bring out the best, to encourage the best, that in future generations they might look back upon us and say, "We did a good job." We thank you, dear Lord, for all you have given to us, more than we ever deserve, but Lord, we would give back to you even as you deserve. We would pray in thy son's most precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Holiard, attention. Holiard, Brian Sanders. Holiard, board march. Paul, please post the flag of the United States of America. Please post the California State flag. All veterans and those in uniform, please salute. All those non-uniformed, please place your right hand over your heart. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? Again.
Congratulations.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Sue. Holiard, three and four. Holiard, retreat. Paul. Holiard, dismiss. The audience may now be seated. How's everyone doing tonight? It's awfully quiet out there. Okay, moving on to item five, ceremonial matters, none. Item six, public comments. I do have a public comment. Lucy?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, fellow councilmembers, city manager and city staff. I want to invite the public to our annual Lunar New Year celebration. It is taking place next Saturday. This year, we have expanded the hours a little bit. It will be from 12:00 PM to 4:00 PM. The menu selection has also expanded a little bit. We have a little bit more food and variety and performances, so hopefully you will join us in our celebration welcoming the Golden Rat.
Thank you.
Oh, it's at Temple City Park. Thank you very much.
It's at Temple City Park. Thank you, Lucy.
Lucy, what is the time?
Twelve to four.
Twelve to noon to 4:00 PM.
Twelve to four.
Yes.
Any other public comments? Okay, get a close public comments. Now consent calendar. All consent calendar items may be approved in a single motion as recommended unless removed for further discussion.
Madam Mayor, I'd like to pull item D, comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June 30th of 2019.
Yes.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move to approve everything on the consent calendar except item B.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, as Councilmember Yu, who's a member of our audit committee along with Councilmember Chavez, ask if I could give a kind of a brief overview of the financial position of the city. You're administrative services director, serves as our chief financial officer of the city. Susan Pakaras will go through a brief overview, but I can gladly report in my role as city manager that for the, at least the time I've been here and many times before, we actually have what's called a clean audit, meaning the financial position of the city is accurately represented. There are no material mistakes or findings. There are some findings, but they're not material to the point of where our financial statements are in any way misrepresented. They are clean and in good working order. So with that, we'll go over a few highlights, talk about some of the high-level stuff and some of the kind of still lingering challenges, a couple of things that will be brought up related to the financial position of the city.
Perhaps before you start, I just wanted to add that as Mayor Potem and I, we serve on the audit committee. As we reported last time, we actually met with the Certified Public Accountant and Auditor Eddie Bailey, LLP, and they've given us a very good report on our city's financial report. So I mean, with something that's good, I think it will be amiss not to share that with the public and also some that we want to commend Mr. City Manager and Director Pakaras on their work. So that's why I think the presentation is in order.
Okay, alright.
Okay, good evening, Mayor Fish.
Thank you.
Mayor Potem Chavez and councilmembers. This is just a brief summary of what our CAFR is, the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, that we have done, we do every year with an independent auditors, as Councilmember Yu mentioned, with Aid Bailey, LLP, formerly Bavarnik Trindey. So basically, to provide a more detailed information about our clean audit, it's really we're conforming with the generally accepted accounting principles. We conform with the reporting requirements. Our financial statements are fairly presented in all material respects, and the supplementary information that is in the CAFR is also fairly stated. We do have two findings, and they're considered significant findings, although it's not a material weakness, it's just something they had to bring out, to point out to us. One is regarding bank reconciliation of our payroll account. It was basically just a timing difference. We booked something in July when it should have been in June. And then the year in closing, it was just, we just overlooked an adjustment of accrued interest payable that was, had been on the books for several years and no one, it just fell through the cracks. So that's something that, these two are easily resolved and will be taken care of by next year's audit. Basically, as of June 30th, 2019, we ended with a surplus of revenues over our expenditures, which gave us about $1.1 million in additional funds. The major revenue variances that are on here, variances from last year, our charges for services are actually about $200,000 lower than previous year because of our, the lower activities we've had in 1819. So that's what caused this. On the other hand, expenditures were also lower because we didn't need a lot of contracted services. The intergovernmental is basically our in lieu VLF, vehicle license fees, that went up by $231,000. It was unanticipated. The investment income was close to $600,000, however, about $300,000 of that was due to the market value of the investments and also the timing of the interest income for the investment or our assets that matured during 1819. So we got our interest paid that year. And then taxes, primarily the $385,000 was mostly from sales tax of uncollected revenue from the prior year. The, I forgot what they're called now, the former Board of Equalization implemented a new system and had glitches where some of the vendors or companies had, could not enter the report on time. The major expenditure variances include capital outlay. We did not have any recorded as capital outlay in 1718. That's why there's a $400,000 variance in 1819. Here you see community development is also down by almost $350,000. Again, it correlates to the lower activity we had in, activities we had in 1819, the lower revenues, lower costs. And then in public safety, that $120,000 is primarily our supplemental events were, our costs there were lower in 1819. So if you look at it, our total expenditures, the variance from prior year was only about $87,000. Let me go back to the revenues. The variance there was almost a million dollars only because of all these activities primarily from, as you see, the investment income, which is almost $600,000.
And the other picture to take from that as well is that there's not necessarily natural revenue growth that's happening going forward. So our revenue growth is steady, but it's not growing at a pace that's like upward trends. You know, we don't see double-digit increases in property tax, we're not seeing double-digit increases in sales tax. It's some good job by your city treasurer, who happens to be Ms. Pakaras as well, but nothing that we can kind of count on to say, "Okay, we're gonna see 5%, 6%, 7% revenue growth every single year in the general fund."
Actually, that's one good point. The interest income is expected to go down in the near future because LAF at one point was at 2.7%. A few months ago, they were at 2.09. They're at 1.94 today.
That's LA County Investment Fund.
It's a state, state investment fund, the LAF. So, and the county also corresponds, is a little bit lower than LAF. So we're seeing CDs that have rates going down. So this, this is a one-time anomaly where we're getting all this interest income. So I'm not banking on it for next two years. So with the $1.1 million surplus that we had for fiscal year 1819, our new fund balance amount for the general fund goes up to $20 million. Originally, it was 18.9 in the beginning of the year, with the 1.1 as you see is $20 million. However, as you recall, this year, we've spent a million and a half already of that amount for the county library. So that's already reduced back to the 18 million. Our government-wide position, this is all of our funds with the general fund or special revenue funds, has been increasing every year, which is a good sign. So as you can see, from 18, 2018, 2019, we're up about $2.6 million there.
And that in correspondence to other communities, it's not, usually you would see it grow, but the next couple slides that Ms. Pakaras is gonna have is gonna show the pension liability, which is now accounted for on the face of the balance sheet of this net position of the city. Another key indicator of that is actually the unrestricted fund balance of that, and you'll see, if you go through the report itself, we're still in the positive. Most cities are actually in the negative in that, in that position too, but it's not growing as, at a rate that it was prior. So that's another kind of key indicator that, you know, we still have liabilities that are still on the books that we're still gonna have to pay for on a go-forward basis that are hanging out there that don't, we're in a very good financial position right now, but it's still, it's, we still have those challenges that hang out there.
So speaking of challenges, it's our, really our retirement liabilities, which is our pension liability and our other post-employment benefit liabilities, which is the health benefits. As you can see, in 1718, our pension liability actually went down by a few thousand dollars. And, but you can look at the other post-employment benefit has gone up about one and a half million dollars. So these are the two items that we'll be focusing on in, while we're focusing on it now and trying to resolve and see how we can control the costs. Currently, those rates that I just showed you, 7.9 million, is at a discount rate of 7.15. That first calls at their investment rate. So as you can see, if they come down with their investment rate to 6.15, the earnings on our assets, our liability goes up to $12 million. So we're hoping their investments do well and, you know, we stay there. On the other hand, if they do really well and invest, the discount rate goes up to 8.15, then our liability goes down to four and a half million dollars. Likewise, on the OPEB, same thing. Our current liability, 7.14 million, 1% drop, goes to 8.69 million. And, but an increase in our investment rate goes to 5.9, goes down to $5.9 million. So these are the two big items we will work on in making sure the city stays afloat. As you've heard, other cities are having issues with this, especially those with a public safety department that includes police and fire.
But Director Pakaras, isn't that though, the long-term trend is really on the retirement liabilities, discount rate most likely will continue to go, go down? And, I mean, they've been kind of slowly over, right?
They've been going down, yes.
And then same thing with the other post-employment benefit. That's, isn't that a trend source or also?
That's also determined by the health rates, the premiums.
Right, but health premiums, we all know, it's not gonna go down. It's most likely gonna go up. So, no, I think, I think what we want to point out is that there is this, while we look really good right now with some surpluses here, we have to be mindful of some of the future liabilities that we have. Because we eventually will have to pay for those one way or another.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Do we have any council questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, I would move that, that we receive and file the comprehensive annual financial report for the year ending June 30th of 2019, receive and file the independent auditors communication to the city, receive and file the independent accountants' report applying to agreed-upon procedures related to Article 8B appropriations limit calculations, and then receive a file independent auditors' report on internal control.
Thank you. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Do I need a roll call? Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Thank you, Susan. Okay, we're gonna move on to item eight, public hearing. Item eight, community development block grant funds for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, our, one of our planners, Adam Gillick, is usually gives this presentation, but he's coordinating the homeless count tonight. So, and his Steve will be, and his replacement will be our interim community development director, Mr. Remers.
So please be easy on me. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Potem, and members of the city council. This is an annual item that you get to look at every January. The federal government provides a certain amount of community development block grant funds every year. It's your prerogative on how to spend that within certain limits. So this is, that's what this item is about. And so in the existing program, funds three different programs that we have in line with the community development block grant program and our housing element. The first two items are related to low-income housing. The first is a housing rehab loan and grant program. Typically, we assist about three to four households. The grant funds about $115,000 to $150,000 a year. Right now, we have 20 households on the waiting list. So we have a lot of people interested in the program. It also helps remediate asbestos and lead within some of the older housing stock. So we often combine that with the housing rehab and loan program. Last fiscal year, we gave three grants, and then this fiscal year, we're expecting to give two grants. And usually, that ranges between $20,000 and $30,000 a year. And then the other program that we like to fund is the youth scholarship program. So that usually helps between 120 and 140 youths in the community afford to participate in our youth events. And we typically provide, provide the maximum amount of money that we can within the budget for this program. It's usually around $22,000 to $25,000 is spent every year. In the existing program, right now, we have, we had budgeted $188,000 for the housing rehab program and $50,000 for the asbestos lead program and about $27,000 for the youth scholarship program. To date, we've spent about $137,000. And so there will be at, there's approximately $129,000 left in the existing balance. Our allocation for the coming fiscal year is $186,000. And every year, that drops by a few percentage points as the federal government cuts back on the program. But this coming fiscal year, we're expecting $186,000. That will also be added to any unallocated funds from the existing fiscal year, and we're expecting to carry over about $129,000 from this fiscal year. If all of that comes true, we will have a budget of about $486,000, okay? Our proposal tonight is to continue spending it in the same way we have in the past few years, and that is by number one, maxing out the amount of the youth scholarship program at about $37,500, and then dividing the rest between the housing rehab loan grant program, $340,000 for that, and then about $110,000 for the asbestos and loan program. And that gives us the total of $486,000. So with that, staff's recommendation is for you to open a public hearing, allow the city manager to make adjustments to the budget depending on how the final numbers and carryovers are from this fiscal year to next fiscal year, and then adopt the budget that's being proposed. With that, I'm available if you have any questions.
Thank you. Counsel question? Public hearing. Oh, open, open public hearing? No? Oh, I said open, we're gonna open public hearing? We have no one who would like to comment on this? Okay. Any council comments?
I have a question.
Question?
Okay, so I'm trying to make sure I'm doing the math here correctly. So on the housing rehabilitation loan and grant program, it looks like we're typically assisting three to four households per year. And in the last two years, we've granted approximately, well, 115 and 150 in the last two years, each, for each of those years, correct?
Mm-hmm.
But we have 20 households on the waiting list. Why are we not, why do we, why do we have so many people on the waiting list if we still, it appears to me, have plenty of money to fund further loans and grants? I mean, is there a limit that, because it looks like we're going about six, well, we had six in, six in 2018 and then eight in 2019.
Yeah. There's three possible answers to that question. One is we continue to get more people signing up for the program every year. So as we clear people off the list, we get more people added to the list. Secondly-
Is it first come, first served, or is there, whoever meets the criteria, obviously?
It's generally first come, first served. And then as we look through people's criteria, they either meet the program criteria or not, and then they're removed from the list. Secondly, if the, the consultant only has so much time that they can give to the city, so we're somewhat limited within that. So sometimes that limits the number of projects they can take on. And then third, if the council so desires, wants to do a very large project, to some degree, we can save up some money year to year in case we wanna plan for that. So-
So it sounds like that's the option we've been taking the last couple years.
We have been carrying over some amount of money every year, not knowing the direction that the, that the council was wanting to go. It looks like there's a steady direction with on the council to continue to support the housing element and affordable housing. So it's our goal internally to increase the number of parties being served by the program over the next fiscal year.
One element that Mr. Remers is bringing up is that part of our housing element does talk about the housing rehab activity, and this is one of the funding sources that we have to kind of do that and meet one of the housing element requirements with the state.
Do you have a question?
Thank you.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Scott, if you could give me an example, if we're putting some money away in case council would like to do a large project, can you give me an example? I mean, that wouldn't be a house, right? It would be, what would it be?
Right. In a previous year, we did, we did some work to the city parking lots to make them ADA accessible. We've put in ADA ramps around schools. Those are some large expensive projects that we could carry over some amount, amount of money from year to year. We get in a little bit of danger if we carry over too much. We need to spend down to a certain level to keep the program managers happy at the county.
Yeah, because that's what I was kind of worried about, is like, if they, if you don't use it, I'm afraid they would take it away.
Yes, it's possible, but about this time every year, we're double-checking numbers, making sure that we're on progress, and we are going to make our numbers for this fiscal year.
Do we have some potential projects in the queue that we could possibly do?
Beyond the housing programs, it's possible if the council wants to look at some other options, it's possible. The community development department, we're focused right now on housing because it is a statewide issue, and it's one of the few programs in the housing element that it's, we, it's one of the few ways that we're really funding affordable housing in the city. So we're really trying to keep that money focused on that initiative.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
One, run real quick follow-up question on the waiting list. So we have about 20 households on the waiting list. How long do they typically last on the waiting list? Do we, I mean, where's, how's the number one person on that waiting list, how long have they been on there?
It's usually about three to four years.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Wow.
Yeah.
Be nice to pare that down, I think.
Yeah, that, that is one of our goals for the work program next fiscal year.
Wow. Okay. Did council have any-
Just one more question there. So for, because speaking of carrying over and unallocated funds, if we're funding just a couple of households every fiscal year, I guess, is there a reason for carrying over an amount that could potentially be allocated to another household or two?
Yeah, and you, you wanna carry over funds to some level if you know you're gonna have a larger project the next fiscal year. I, I think it's clear that, from my perspective, that it has been the wish of the council over the last few years to, to continue spending the money as we have in the past. So the need to carry over funds from year to year is not necessary. So that's why our goal in the next work program fiscal year is to, is to provide services to more houses and more hous, more households in the next fiscal year. So our goal is to have less carryover next fiscal year. I see.
Okay, good.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Did you have any questions?
Yeah, just have a simple question. I mean, kind of along the same lines of, I mean, we, we gave up four loans and four grants, 150, total 150,000. Does it make sense to, since you have so many household on the waiting list, to perhaps give a little less so that more people can share in the wealth? And I don't know whether, how we draw the line generally. Is it because the, what they ask for and you fund a certain percentage of their, what the money they're asking for? Is it because the, what they ask for and you fund a certain percentage of their, what the money they're asking for?
Well, I think it's maximum amount, because it qualifies.
Well, I'm actually saying that, well, that's it, makes sense to reduce the amount so that more households can benefit.
Well, yeah, obviously, you have more to play with.
The, it, it's possible, it's something we could do. What we have found is that the, it is very efficient for us to fund the, the loan program because that's more expensive. That, the loan program provides more money than the grant program.
I see.
The loan program is much more efficient because there's only, there's more money going to one person, it's less paperwork. So it allows us to minimize our administrative costs.
Right.
However, those people who are on the list and all they want is a grant for a small project, those people are given a little bit more priority because we can give them a small grant and then just move forward through the process. The, the, the real story is, is that the people who want the grants are very few and far between.
Right.
The people who want the loan is most of the list. The grant program people, it's usually a small repair to the structure. The, the loan programs are much more work.
I see. Do we know, or do we have any figures of how many of these loans we've actually been repaid?
The, I don't have any tonight. We could look over, but every year, we get a few of them repaid as people refinance the loans, refinance their property or-
If I remember correctly, man, maybe I'm thinking of something else. In the past years, there's a, a waiver of that as well sometimes, right? That they could apply for, that if they refinance, they don't necessarily have to repay the loan.
Yes, there are some-
When the city grants a waiver or whatever.
Yeah, the, we have a, do have a policy document that provides certain reasons why they don't have to repay the loan when they refinance. But when the property sells, if the property is rented, and there's some other reasons why they have to repay the loan. And we do get a few of those every, every year. We get two or three loans that are repaid.
Scott, do they stay, if the property stays in the family, does it, you know, eliminate the, the loan?
I don't know. I, I know generally that if the property changes hands, that, that they have to repay the loan.
Mr. Remers is correct. And that usually falls within the HUD guidelines, too, of how, how that plays out. So we, we're, we're, we're working through the county who's working on our behalf through HUD for those. So they're, they're pretty, there's, HUD has some pretty definitive schedules and requirements related to that, too, and including the forgiveness component as well.
So no forgiveness if it stays in, passed down to children or?
I believe not, but we, we'll, we'll have to double-check on that one. I'll get back to you.
Okay. Any other questions from counsel? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor Fish, I would make a motion that we authorize the city manager to amend the CDBG funded program allocations up to fifty percent of the approved allocation as necessary throughout the fiscal year and adopt Resolution 20-5445 establishing the CDBG funded programs and allocations for fiscal year 2020, 2021. Total CDBG budget for fiscal year 2020 to 2021 includes the estimated allocation of one hundred eighty-six thousand, unallocated prior year's funds of one hundred seventy-one thousand five hundred and fifty-five dollars, and up to one hundred and thirty thousand seven hundred and forty dollars of carryover from fiscal year 2019 to 2020. Total budget, four hundred eighty-eight thousand two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Proten Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Moving on to item nine, unfinished business legislative update.
Mayor Fish, members of the council, today you'll be receiving a report from actually three of our staff members. Mr. Haworth, Mr. Remers, and Mr. Murphy will be here as well to go over what is pretty much in, I've been in the business for about twenty-plus years, probably one of the most comprehensive changes in land use law as it relates to the state preemption of local control over land use. Today, we're gonna go over some of those that are specifically relevant to ADUs. At your next meeting, we also will be discussing SB 50 as well. Probably a staff suggesting to you to consider a letter of opposition to that, to that bill as well. But we'll let staff kind of walk through what we are dealing with right now. And it, I'll, let me warn you now, some of this is going to be a bit frustrating because it's been a bit frustrating for staff as well and for municipalities throughout California in terms of both the application of the existing laws that are on the books as of January 1st and kind of what we see going forward. Mr. Remers has, has done a good job of, as, as you know, expressing to SCAG some of our frustration with the new RENA numbers, which are the housing allocation that we are supposed to do over the next eight years. As he's expressed in some of the letters, we've tried to be good actors in terms of our general plan and our specific plan in meeting our prior RENA numbers. What's really been happening and frustrating for us is that those rules that we've kind of, and you as the council planning commission and, and the community have said, here's how we're looking to develop our, our, our community, trying to meet those housing goals. A lot of this legislation makes it very complicated for us to, to both interpret, implement, and then try to meet those goals going forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to the collective staff here today. So thank you to all three of them for their help.
Good evening, Mayor Fish and members of the public and members of the council, of course. Tonight's item provides an update, as Mr. Cook had said, on some key housing bills that were recently enacted. As you recall, back in October 2019, Governor Newsom signed over a thousand bills into law. And shortly thereafter, in November, we came back to council with an analysis of the most pertinent bills that would impact city services and programs. Those three categories were human resources, housing, and then worker reclassification. There was a lot of nuance associated with the housing bills just because there were such sweeping challenges or sweeping changes with that. So tonight's focus is talking a little bit more about what those housing laws are and how they will affect Temple City. With that being said, tonight's discussion focuses on the big picture, on the macro approach. And because, again, there's so many nuances in the law, we really wanted to tailor this presentation to how it's going to specifically affect Temple City. Please note that the new legislation, I mean, this has been enacted not even a month ago. And so it is subject to new interpretations, even lawsuits. We will be requiring some, asking council to approve some actions and appropriations moving forward on this housing legislation, some of it being changes to the zoning code, others asking for appropriations for some internal staff processes. So tonight's discussion is divided into three sub-discussions, accessory dwelling units, housing production, and then increased densities. And the discussion on increased densities was not included with your staff report, but because now that discussion on SB 50 has just raised its head in the last couple of days, we decided to include that discussion as part of tonight's presentation. So I'll turn it over now to Scott, and he'll talk a little bit more about accessory dwelling units.
Tonight, I'm pretending to be an expert on accessory dwelling units, so I'll do my best to answer your questions as they come. The, the government code that we have right now is a result of six different state, state bills that were approved that affected ADUs. The state has had some difficult time trying to figure, figure out how to get all these bills to work together as a cohesive whole, which has left a lot of cities placing phone calls, distressed phone calls, because they don't understand the new state law. And the state is also trying to figure out how to interpret it as well.
Just sort of anecdotally, I placed a phone call today to my normal contact at the Department of Housing and Community Development. And his outgoing voicemail message is now, if this is a message about ADUs, do not leave it. Instead, email it. And he gives the email address, which is, I believe, aduinfo@hcd.ca.gov. So he's not even taking phone calls anymore, given the complexity that's in front of us.
So with that, we'll do our best tonight. So if you could do the next slide. Just to let you know where we stand today with accessory dwelling units. Right now, we have thirty planning applications in the process. We have already approved and planning one hundred and twenty applications for ADUs. We have-
Over what period of time?
Since the law was adopted in 2017. Building applications, we've had twenty-one building applications for building permits submitted. They're currently in plan check. Thirteen are ready to be issued. Forty-four permits have been issued but not finalized, and thirty-four building permits have been finalized. So around one hundred and sixty-seven ADUs are in process right now. In the state law, previous state law allowed us to create a new thing called a junior accessory dwelling unit. The new bills require us to allow junior accessory dwelling units. So we're gonna start seeing applications for these. A junior accessory dwelling unit, in summary, is, has to be within the structure. You can do a small addition of one hundred and fifty square feet to fit it, but generally is inside an existing structure. It cannot be more than five hundred square feet. You are only allowed one per lot. The JADU or the main house has to be owner occupied. So if there's a JADU on site, one of those units has to be occupied by the owner. We can require a covenant stating that they cannot sell either unit separately. It must have its own entrance, a JADU, it has to have its own entrance. It has to have what's called an efficiency kitchen, which basically is a sink, cabinets, and some sort of way of cooking food.
I have a question. Can you have more than one?
No, you cannot have more than one JADU on a property.
So it could be, like, a microwave oven?
It could be some sort of cooking appliance. It could be an Instapot, it could be a microwave oven, it could be anything like that, yeah. We're not allowed to require any additional parking. And we can't charge for hookups, for electrical hookups, because the idea is it's already in the structure, you don't need any additional utilities, so. We wanted to give you an idea for what it's-
Can I ask a quick question?
Yeah.
So it's, it's almost like you either convert like an existing part of a house and just add a outside entrance?
Exactly.
Or you find some way to fit something that attaches to the main structure?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct. So in this example, it's a, this is a two-story house. On the ground floor, you have the garage on the left side of the screen. You have an entry, a living room, a kitchen, a family room, and a bedroom. And what we show in green here is a bedroom that could be converted to a JADU. You'd still have a closet, you'd still have its own bathroom, and then you would just add a cooking surface. So if you do it on the next slide, we'll zoom in here and show you what the, in order to, to convert the bedroom to a JADU, all you have to do is close off the door to the rest of the house, install an efficiency kitchen, which is basically just a countertop and a sink, and then install an exterior door, and you have a JADU. Here's some examples of what it-
Could it have to have a bathroom?
Uh, I believe so.
Okay, because it doesn't, in your thing here, it didn't really say that, but I'm assuming.
Good question. I think it has to have a bathroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, for, yeah, I think for housing law requires a unit to have a bathroom. So really, it's just a bed and a kitchen nearby, so all in the same room.
Didn't we used to call those a?
Bachelor?
Yeah.
I think it's called a mess.
What did we call those before?
It was, um, I don't know.
Something, we had a name for those.
We had, we had something similar to this called a guest house. But guest houses were not allowed to have a kitchen.
Studio apartments?
Oh, studio, that's right.
Studio apartments.
Just one large room.
One room, with a bathroom.
No, Mr. Remers, then previously, the state says if they add that to an existing garage, they only need to add the garage back. That's, I guess, that still remains the case.
If you could say that again?
Previous, when the law changed last time, they could have taken an, an existing garage, converted into an ADU without rebuilding another garage. I guess that law remains, right?
Yes, so with an accessory dwelling unit, you do not need to replace the required parking for the house. So if you can convert the garage to an accessory dwelling unit, then you don't have to provide any parking. The same thing with a JADU. Yeah. So that's it for JADUs. On the next slide, we'll turn a page and go to accessory dwelling units. So we've had these for a few years now. The state has made some additional modifications. The, one of the biggest that the planners are focusing on is that lot coverage, floor area ratio, and open space and minimum lot size cannot preclude the existence of an ADU of at least eight hundred square feet. So we have to allow at least an eight hundred square foot housing unit, ADU, on a property independent of the FAR, the lot coverage, the minimum lot size.
So they exceed the FAR and you still have to permit it?
That's correct.
Wow.
Yes, sir. So if it exceeds FAR, if it exceeds lot coverage, if it doesn't allow for the required permeable surface under state guidelines for, what's that guideline, for the low water or the-
For lid, low impact.
Right, your low-impact development guidelines. All of those get thrown out the window as long as the ADU is eight hundred square feet or, or less.
When it comes to parking, now, when you convert a garage, you cannot require any additional parking. There's no parking required if the unit is within a half a mile of a bus stop. There's, we cannot require any additional setbacks if it's within an existing structure. And we can only require a maximum four-foot setback from the rear and the side property line for a new detached ADU. Again, looking in the single-family zones, that allows for both an ADU and a junior accessory dwelling unit. So on a single-family property, you can convert a portion of the house to a JADU and build an ADU in the rear.
So you have two units?
Yeah.
Yeah, two additional units.
And then you have three units.
Yeah.
Can, can a JADU be part of the ADU? As a, as a separate structure? So you have a detached ADU with a separate JADU attached to the ADU?
No, because a JADU by definition has to be within the, the house, within the main structure.
Okay, got it.
Or, or it says within the house or the garage.
Yes.
But that means the garage is still a garage.
If the garage is attached to the house, I think that was the intent, but. Because if you're converting a garage, a detached garage, then it's an ADU. We cannot require an owner to live on the property. Now, that rule will, will sunset in 2025. But from now until 2025, we cannot require an owner to live on the property.
You cannot?
We cannot.
So earlier, you said that one of the requirements is that the owner, that there must be an owner occupied.
For JADUs.
For JADU.
I thought in one of the units.
For, for a JADU.
Oh, okay, we're talking about ADU.
Now just a regular ADU.
A little confusing.
Yeah.
Got you now.
There's a maximum review period of sixty days, so we have to review the application within sixty days. If there are some non-conforming zoning issues on the property, we cannot require those to be modified. And if you have a single-family HOA, in the past, some HOAs have said we're not going to allow ADUs. This, the state will not allow a prohibition on ADUs. So if you have an HOA, those HOAs cannot prohibit ADUs.
That review applies to plan check as well or just planning clearance?
Um, just the planning side.
Scott, are, is the property reassessed for taxes once you put an ADU in?
I don't know.
I don't think so.
Typically, when we do a-
It increases space.
Yeah, for, for a JADU, it might not. For an ADU, I think it does. We talked to HDL, and I think they said that they look at the taxes when there's a lot of construction that occurs at a site, so.
It's still not something that the assessor's office has distinguished and created as a different category? But their, HDLR property tax consultant works with most LA County cities as well, is actually looking into that issue because of how prevalent it is becoming throughout the state and in LA County.
I have a question about the parking. So it says, when converting a garage, we cannot require the parking to be replaced. But if you're not converting a garage, say you're building a detached ADU, then that parking is still required?
Then, if it's a detached ADU, we can require one parking space. The parking space does not have to be in a structure, it can be on a driveway. If that detached ADU is within a half a mile of a bus stop, then they don't have to provide any parking.
Any bus stop?
Yes.
So it doesn't have the previous requirement of, was it fif, every, it has to have a, a bus line that comes by every fifteen minutes? That, that's no longer there?
So if you have bus service at that bus stop once a day, you don't have to have a car, a place to park?
All right.
Um, so we're not only, we're also allowing, um, due to state law, ADUs in multifamily areas. So, uh, if you have a multifamily property, you can convert your non-habitable space, i.e. your garage, um, within the existing structure, um, to an ADU as well. You cannot increase the density of the site by more than twenty-five percent. Um, and the, there's a maximum height limitation of sixteen feet and a maximum, um, se- a minimum setback of four feet from the side yard.
I just wanna add on to what, what Mr. Reamer said. Um, he mentioned conversion of garages. Uh, the guidance and policy documents also specifically called out storage rooms and unused boiler rooms as potentially convertible to ADUs. So apparently if you have an older apartment building, probably not the case in Temple City, but an older apartment building that had a much larger boiler room than is currently needed with a modern furnace and, and air conditioning, you could put up a wall, punch a window, and create a new ADU. Um, that's how far they're going to push this forward, um, which is why as we, we move along, we'll talk about kind of what our options are, and, and you'll see that we have very few.
Mr. Cook? Well, we have to do something to increase staff to accommodate all these ADU applications. I think they need some help.
Interestingly, and, and again, I can only speak anecdotally, but going back a few slides, there are a hundred and twenty that have been approved in Temple City in the years two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Only thirty in the process right now. So it averaged out sixty a year over the first two years, and now you're down to thirty. Um, the new law may get a bit of a bump, especially with the junior ADUs being wholly enclosed. If someone has a four or five-bedroom home with a bedroom on the first level, then they wanna do a junior ADU. There may be a bump there, but a lot of the people that really wanted ADUs jumped on them back in two thousand eighteen, or certainly in the first part of two thousand nineteen. Um, and again, anecdotally speaking, in the other cities that I'm familiar with, we're not seeing a big rush of applications now. We, we really have seen the bump, and unless the junior ADUs cause another bump, uh, it's not getting as much traction as you might think.
I, I, if I can, I, we're, we've seen a slowdown a little bit in December and January, and a little bit in November, um, because people saw what was happening at the state level, and were kind of waiting to see how the city would react and how it would modify its ordinances. We get a lot of people coming into the counter, asking us, what does the new state law mean? And we tell them, we're not sure, call the state, and we give them the website. Um, and so there are a lot of, our developers are kind of putting their projects on hold until we modify our ordinance. And, um, so we, we may see within, a, a little bit of pent-up demand, um, come through, um, in the mid, in the summer, probably.
Uh, Mr. Reamer, you, you mentioned the, the, the term developer. I imagine most of these are done by homeowners, right? Just to increase, uh, improve, uh, income, rental income or some sorts?
In Temple City, we're seeing a lot of different permutations. We're seeing some people who have an existing non-conforming condition, um, who are trying to legalize what they have. We see people who come in, they wanna provide additional housing on their lot, and we do see, we have seen development applications where someone's building a new single-family house, um, with an ADU already designed into it. Um, given the cost of land in the city, um, we're, we've seen more applications for that than I had expected in the past.
Wow. So, so, so it's entirely conceivable that somebody come in with a brand-new development, max out the FAR, and then tack on top of that another eight hundred square feet-
Yes.
Without any parking, without any, anything else, right?
Yes, and to make it even worse, um, so let's say our, the maximum FAR on a site is thirty-five, gives you a thirty-five hundred square foot house. They get an extra eight hundred square feet to build the ADU. There's no way of us knowing if they actually use that as a legal unit. They could re-convert it back into just a really large addition to the house.
Another large bedroom.
So they got an extra eight hundred square feet as an addition to the house.
Gee, I think I'll submit an application next month.
I think I'm gonna rent out some bedrooms.
But these are all the unintended consequences that the people who wrote the legislation didn't think about, so.
Man, this is horrible.
Um, the impact fees, so right now, um, if the ADU is less than seven hundred fifty square feet, um, there are no impact fees that can be charged. Um, if it's greater than seven hundred fifty square feet, we have to give them a reduction in the fee proportional to the size of the unit. Um, and then the state has also created a five-year amnesty period. If someone has a non-permitted ADU, they get five years to keep that ADU and bring it into conformance with the code, as long as there's no life and safety issues at the property.
Wow. How does that affect the people who we have that were considered in violation?
Um, that's a good question. We're still trying to figure out how to apply it to our existing procedures and our existing programs. Um, we're, we're not quite sure how that's gonna affect our community preservation program. Uh, on the next slide, in terms of the work program, we're expecting, we're gonna adopt an urgency ordinance. Um, we're hoping to bring that to you in February or March. Um, we're gonna create an ADU shot clock to make sure that we're reviewing the applications within the required sixty days. Um, we'll be creating a, a handout for the public so that they can navigate the, um, new code, and then we're gonna evaluate those changes to the community preservation program, so.
Mr. Reamer, what would this urgency ordinance, uh, for?
The urgency ordinance will be to modify our existing ADU, um, ordinance so that it's in compliance with state code.
Oh, I thought it's, you can break something so we're restricted a little bit, uh, if we-
The, we, we kinda-
Is there any room for, you know, local control with some of these things?
That's a great segue to my next slide. On the next slide, I can show you some things that we're talking about and things that we're concerned about. Um, one is in Temple City, we have an unusual lot pattern called, we call them tiered lots. It's where you have one lot, you have about three or four lots in a line down a private easement driveway. Uh, it's not a flag lot where you have a dedicated driveway, it's a private easement. Um, some of those easements are within, are about ten to fifteen feet wide. Our concern is that if there's no parking required, people are gonna park in the easement, and then you're not gonna be able to get a fire truck down that easement if there's a fire. So we have some concerns about, um, fire safety issues on tiered lots, and so we're gonna look and see what can be done in terms of that. Um, we're, we'd like to look at how we can im, uh, lower the impact or limit the impact of ADUs on the environment. If we're going to be increasing the density of the city, we need to consider what the environmental impact of that would be. And, um, the other impact of growth that you typically look at is what is the impact of growth on infrastructure? So we'd like to look at, the one thing the state does allow us to do is to limit the location of new ADUs based on the adequacy of sewer and water. Um, so we'll, we will be looking at the adequacy of the sewer and water system and, um, considering regulation, um, limiting the locations of ADUs based on that.
A question about that. So who makes that determination exactly? Is that a, is that a input from the utilities? Or how's that evaluated?
Yeah, so on the sewer end, it's a little bit easier because the city has a sewer master plan. Um, and that master plan demonstrates where the sewers are adequate or inadequate. There's like a five-scale rating scale, and it would be up to the planning commission and city council to decide where on that scale we would wanna prohibit development, if at all. Um, in terms of water, we'd need to, we're gonna need to start working with the water companies to find out. Typically, the way you do that is through a fire flow test. You look at the water flow, and you consider whether there's enough flow to allow for that unit to be built.
Uh, Mr. Reamer, but, um, question on the fire life safety. You know, when we build a new home in Temple City or a new apartment, we typically will require them to provide fire sprinkler. And for additions, uh, at what point do we require the entire structure to be, uh, fire sprinkled?
Um, I don't think, um, this city has a requirement that an addition requires a, a fire, um, system.
Well, typically, I would say that an addition would not, should not trigger that, because that's the same household. So should, should there be a fire in my bedroom, I'm sitting in the living room, I would have noticed it. However, if there's a room totally close off to my house, and if it's burning in there, I would have no way, no. So perhaps we can look as a city, uh, the fire life safety protection of, perhaps if they put, put in a J, JADU or some, uh, AD of that nature, then maybe the entire house should be fire sprinkled.
Yeah, we, we can look at that. The state code does, um, have some regulations about that, so we can include that when we bring you an ordinance.
Okay.
You mentioned earlier about the difficulty in monitoring these after they've been done, and are they actually using it for the intended use? Do we have any procedure, for example, I know we don't allow Airbnbs in our city. Have we considered that some of these ADUs may be being used for that purpose? And do we have any procedure to check that or follow up on that?
The, the state code does specifically say we can prohibit the short-term rental of an ADU, so that's good. Um, so, under the existing code, we don't allow short-term rentals in general. Um, we, um, right now, we have the ability to go on Airbnb and try to find locations. Um, and then, um, we are looking at getting a service that uses a set of computer algorithms to determine the locations of ADUs and help with that enforcement process.
Can I also ask, ask another question on that slide regarding the, uh, you mentioned the impact of ADUs on the environment? So for larger developments and even for the preparation of our general plan update and specific plan, we had to do an EIR. And the EIR is mandated by state law. So, is, I mean, and let's be honest, there's a lot of people who use the EIR and SEQA to, for lack of a better term, defeat development. So is that a tool that you could use the state's tool against the state?
It would be great, uh, if we could. The, the, the state legislation, um, doesn't require SEQA review. So they can, they can approve this legislation without any environmental review. The state has also said that any changes to your ADU ordinance are exempt from SEQA. So SEQA would not apply to the change in the ordinance. Um, so despite that, we as staff still feel like it's, it's important to consider the impact on the environment as, as a whole, and look for ways of mitigating that where, where, and it's appropriate.
So they've already thought about that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think that concludes the ADU slide. Is that right, Brian?
All right, so going into next part of the discussion, uh, we'll be talking about some, uh, new laws uh, that are focused on housing production. Um, there are actually two laws that were recently acted. One was AB seventeen sixty-three, which furthers affordable housing, and SB three thirty, which, um, is in effect till twenty twenty-five, which changes housing production protocols, or how we process housing applications. AB seventeen sixty-three, I will caveat by saying that, um, while it creates a super-density bonus program that the state provides, the city has never ever processed a project that has asked for density bonuses from the state. Additionally, we've never processed an affordable housing project. However, as we're starting to see this new legislation coming, uh, uh, coming forward and seeing a lot more affordable housing monies coming from the state, um, this could apply to the city. Um, one thing I want to mention is that the law is very, um, it's very vague on whether or not the city would get the super-density bonus application. Meaning that it says that it applies to urban areas, but we won't know until June of this year whether or not this applies to us. Um, essentially what it does is if new affordable housing projects are coming in, it, it provides added densities. So, um, for example, if you have a housing project, um, that's eighty percent lower income and twenty percent moderate income, it now allows for a thirty-three, uh, foot height increase. Um, it also, um, increases, um, the ability to receive incentives like, you know, relaxed setback standards or, or no parking. Um, essentially what it does is it, it allows these densification of buildings so that the projects can pencil out financially for the developer to build these. Um, but there's a lot of, uh, density increases for lower-income units. So if you have a ten-unit project, uh, that you, has all affordable units, and those are, those are regulated by affordability covenants, you can now have eight, uh, an eighty percent density on top of that. So instead of ten units, you could have eighteen very low-income units. And the same thing goes for lower-income special needs. So if a veteran housing, uh, association or someone who wants to do, um, an affordable housing project for those with developmental disabilities, um, because most of that population is considered lower income, um, that will increase projects now by a hundred and eighty percent. So if you had a ten-unit project, now you've got a twenty-eight unit project that's allowed by right. And that still also includes the height increases of the thirty-three feet. So, uh, again, it's not something that's going to be coming tomorrow, but it's something to keep on our radar, especially as more affordable housing resources come online. The next one is SB three thirty. Um, this again was, uh, these are, um, a series of provisions that, uh, will be in effect till twenty twenty-five. It was, they, they were created to, to spur more housing production because there's such a housing crisis in California. Um, so it is streamlined the application process, and this applies to residential, mixed-use, and transitional supportive housing. Um, when it comes to mixed use, two-thirds of the project needs to be residential for it to apply. But essentially what it does is it creates a preliminary application, which, um, is, is basically, uh, a menu of, here's what you need to do, real quick, quick and dirty, pr- provide the preliminary information that you need to, developer. And then we'll review the application, and that whole process takes a hundred and eighty days to do. Um, so it's a very quick process. Once the application is approved, then the city has ninety days to, um, to process that for discretionary, uh, projects, and also those that require SEQA review, or sixty days, uh, for projects that have forty-nine percent affordable housing. So really, it's, it's, it's getting projects in and out of our planning queue. And what makes this really unique too is that there's, you can only have five public meetings on a housing project. So you have to, uh, uh, apply, uh, approve or deny, and that's it. And the, of that five public meetings, that does not, uh, include the appeal process. In addition to that, it also prevents the city from downzoning any properties. Um, and so, um, it applies to land use, zoning and development standards as of two thousand eighteen. The good thing is it doesn't affect any good work that has been done with the general plan or the specific plan. Um, however, if the city said, okay, we do need to downzone this part of the, uh, of the city, well, you have to make up for that density elsewhere in the city. So there's a no-net loss in residential capacity. Um, there's now tenant protections and affordability replacement requirements. So, um, if there was a multifamily building that was rental, and a developer wanted to, uh, raise it and, and, and use some density bonuses to, to build a, a bigger building, they would have to provide, um, replacement, I'm sorry, relocation assistance. And, uh, they would also have to give them six months' notice, um, before they start construction. So it's very, uh, tenant-friendly. And they would also, if, if this person, let's say it was like, um, uh, an older woman who was retired, living on social, uh, security, um, they would have to provide that same type of rent in the new project. Uh, and finally, um, when it comes to preventing downzoning under SB three thirty, there's no housing moratoriums or residential caps allowed for the next five years, so the city can't do any of that. So, uh, over the next, uh, six months, the work program in, in achieving, uh, this, these two, uh, new laws, is develop new applications. What we wanna do is when we're looking at the planning, um, application, we wanna del, be very clear and say, oh, by the way, if you're gonna do a multifamily project, here's what you need to, to submit. Or a single-family, here's what you need to submit. We're trying to do things that'll make it very, uh, much easier for us to, to bring the applications and, and to process them quicker. We'll also have to revise the internal protocols. Again, a hundred and eighty days to get the applications through. So, like Scott said, we had to do a shot clock with the ADUs. We would have to do this with new housing projects. We'll also need to amend the zoning code, um, to incorporate the new provisions of the amended, uh, density bonus law that the state, um, has imposed. We'll be looking to take that in June, um, as part of another series of zoning updates from our recently completed, um, zoning code. And then finally, we'll continue to monitor for cleanup legislation, because it just seems that there's always cleanup legislation going on. I'll give you an example. The ADU legislation that we talked about started in two thousand seventeen, and it's still getting cleanup legislation. So it's an ongoing process. And then finally, um, the, 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 the law that's really come to light is SB fifty. It's not a law, it's resurrected. It was actually a two-year bol, uh, bill, um, that was introduced last year. And what it is, what it does is it proposes legislation to increase density to meet housing goals. And when we mean housing goals, we mean arena numbers. And so it was a very controversial bill last year. And so, it was a very controversial bill last year. It ended up getting tabled, but basically, it allowed an upzoning of areas. And in Temple City, this would require by right, projects up to four stories on corridors that have bus lines. It would also require by right, fourplexes in residential neighborhoods. So, right now, you've got, you can do a threeplex. If you think about it with your ADUs, now you can do a fourplex. And, and like the ADU laws, it does exempt many projects from SEQA review.
Brian, you can do a fourplex in residential as long as it's not in the R1?
Yes. So, basically, this, well, I think, in the R1, I'm sorry.
In the R1, yes.
You can do it in the R1.
If SB 50, if SB 50 passes, then every R1 property could be converted to a fourplex.
Fourplex. Now, as, as this-
Basically, if that passes, they're really, they take away the R1.
They, they would, in essence, the best description I've, I've seen, they would, in essence, turn all R1 zones into the central-to-western part of San Francisco out in the numbered avenues, where you'll have some legacy, single-family homes next to essentially two-down, two-up apartment buildings. That's the model that, that they're envisioning. As Mr. Haworth said, a lot of fight against it, a lot of people don't like it. On the other hand, it's getting some traction in, in the legislature. So, the league is strongly opposing it because of what it would do to the R1 communities.
You're opposing it? Cog cities. Yes, it's cog cities.
So, as we look at this legislation, it was, it was actually in the Senate Appropriations Committee, and that's where bills kind of go to die, so to speak. It was resurrected in another Senate committee, and now the bill had, well, the bill authors now have until the end of this month for it to pass the Senate and then go before the governor for signature. Right now, it's, we're not sure where it's going. You hear one thing, you hear another thing. We're continuing to monitor that, but within the next week, we'll have a better idea. And we'll bring back another analysis of what this all means if it does get passed. We'll also bring a request before council to state opposition letter against this new proposed bill. The other, other thing that's very interesting is that it's requiring you, within the next eight years, to meet arena numbers. So, that's 2,150 new units in the city. So, you're essentially increasing the city's residential supply by 20% in the next eight years. How do you do that?
Twenty-five hundred?
Twenty-one thousand, twenty, 2,150.
But they're not providing us with the financial means to achieve that.
Correct.
No, they're not. All you can do is zone it, and hopefully, they will come, right?
Right.
If you, if you zone it, and they will come. But, you know-
It, it also does not help with the homeless or low income at all. That's one of the big, the big arguments.
Right. And there's no carve-outs for affordability?
Exactly. But I, but I will say that all of our surrounding communities are going through the same thing, and no one wants it. And it, basically, it's because it takes away local control from, from us and what we want to do.
Well, even if you want it, I mean, the, you have to have developers willing to pay that money to build things.
Well, you know, it, it's really kind of unrealistic to get to the arena numbers. It just is, it's unrealistic. It just, it's, even if you had someone who was going to come in, they're not going to invest like that in one community.
Right.
It's not going to happen in eight years. So, but-
Do we know why the first round, we had a number? I don't know what the number was, 2,000-something. And then, most of the cities, excuse me, the San Gabel Valley said, this is not right. You need to go back and revise it. Temple Cities was one of the few that increased. And the majority of the San Gabel Valley cities decreased in their arena numbers, but here we are, and ours increased substantially. I don't, I don't understand why.
Actually, so there's been a few rounds that went through SCAG. When I wrote the letter to SCAG back in November, our number was 2,600 housing units. After this, after SCAG changed its methodology, our number has dropped to 2,100.
2,100?
Yeah. So, I'm, I'm happy to take credit for the drop of 500 units.
Well, thank you, thank you. But initially, it was-
But, but what specifically it was, I think there were a lot of cities that were arguing that additional, the additional density should be placed where there's high-quality transit.
Okay.
And so, they've reallocated some of the formulas to provide that.
Do you know what our first number was?
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, I don't offhand, no.
Okay. Well, thank you for your efforts with that.
There's also, I just also wanted to say that there's also an argument over what is the definition of transit. I know that, that was a big thing. It's, you know.
As you can see from staff's presentation and thinking of Mr. Haworth, Mr. Reimers, and Mr. Murphy, there's frustration on our part as staff. And I think the frustrating part, again, just to kind of wrap up and for any other council questions or public discussion, is the, the exercise that you went over for the last three and a half years, and staff has with the general plan and our specific plan to reach, the goals that we've been trying to reach, is just seems to be somewhat, for lack, not to be, not to use bombastic language, but being, there's an upheaval with it. And we'll, we, we have our task at hand. We've, we've demonstrated that through the R processing and earnest processing and forthright processing of the ADU laws prior. And we will try to do that to our best of our ability, but as has been noted, some of this is just not realistic or achievable in any way, shape, or form, no less what the community has expressed through the general plan process and our other processes through the Planning Commission, and finally, expressed through you in your adoption of your general plan and your specific, and specific plan and zoning code. So, we're here for any questions. Any other further questions?
Council have any other questions?
Mr. Weiner is from up north, correct? San Francisco?
I believe he's from, represents parts of San Francisco.
Yes.
That explains a lot.
And I will add one thing, is he, they did revise it. He was told by many, obviously, many communities that he was taking away local control. So, what he added was a two-year extension, correct? A two-year extension? This is to the new bill, to, for the cities to try to get to that, to try to reach their arena numbers before it's imposed. But, it's really kind of unrealistic because nothing's going to happen in two years.
Yeah.
So, he, he was giving us that by saying, well, I will give you some type of local control, so I'm going to give all the cities two years to try to get them. But, I mean, two, two years is-
Yeah. If, if you consider they're asking us to plan for anywhere between 30 to 70 years' worth of growth in an eight-year period, I'm not sure another two years is all that helpful.
Correct. That's exactly what he said.
And, and we were talking about this today, and we, we couldn't imagine now taking this back out to the community to figure out where you're going to put densities at, because it will pit one neighborhood against another, and then the way that it's being approved, it's approved by two state agencies. And if they don't approve it, we don't know what that process or those qualifiers are going to be, then, then you would just have to go under the original provisions of SB 50, which is just four, fourplexes everywhere.
You know, and another thing that was brought up was if they could, if they could maybe communities, neighboring communities that are right up against each other possibly share the arena numbers, if one community is able to reach it because they have the actual space, where like with Temple City, all of us, we're all pretty much built out. But if you start going out-
City of industry.
Correct. But then the problem you have is the actual money. Then who's going to actually build 800 homes or something? So, there's just, there's a lot of different things that are coming down.
Well, I think what's unfortunate is that the, what they call the redevelopment light bill, which is where they were going to reinstitute redevelopment, that was, that was vetoed by the governor. And that would have provided a lot of housing money to at least get some of this affordable housing moving forward.
And redevelopment was also brought up. I will say, all the communities are missing redevelopment, but that's not even in the, in the discussion, unfortunately. Do we have any other questions from council? Okay, I'll go ahead and open public comments. Okay.
Well, good evening, Madam Mayor and City Council and staff. On ADUs, I kind of came up with a couple ideas here, questions on possibilities. The first one is, is a guest room that's attached to a garage, which already has plumbing in it. Would that be, could that be converted into an ADU if you provide the cook surface? Wow, okay. We'll have to yes on that one. And in some cases, I know when I've been at the Planning Commission, people put in pool houses, and they have everything except a cooking surface. Could now a pool house-
Could be.
-be converted? Wow, okay.
If it has everything, yeah.
And for a junior ADU, can a second story be considered a junior ADU? It can? Oh, my God. And if you live in a multi-unit condo, townhouse development, and you're at the very end, can you tack on a junior ADU to your unit? That, that, that one, I was-
Want to try to answer that?
Trying to figure that one out on my own, but that's why I'm asking you guys for guidance.
Probably, we don't know. Yeah.
Yeah, okay. Not, not a problem. Just like I say, these are things that popped up right now because it's all pretty bizarre. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to close public comments. Any final council questions or comments?
Sure.
Councilman Mann.
Mayor Fish, thank you. So, maybe I'll borrow Mr. Cliff's way of discussing this. I'm not expecting answers, it's just thoughts going through my head, because I know it's pretty clear that it's unclear right now about where we, where we lie. One of the things that jumped out at me was this elimination of open space requirement, which as, if, if we've all been paying attention, the county recently passed a Measure W law that penalizes you for impermeable surfaces. So, now you have legislation from the state and the county that appears to be in direct conflict with each other, either directly or indirectly. If you wanted to support the so-called housing crisis that the legislature is pushing, then you're going to be creating more impermeable surfaces. Then, the county then hits, slaps you on the other side, on, from the property tax side, and says, well, now you don't have as many impermeable surfaces to infiltrate groundwater for water quality. So, that, that just was a bit of irony for me when I was going through this. I had a lot of sort of just questions in relation to our existing ADU ordinance, and I know it's going to take some time to flesh out. Like, for example, our existing ordinance, we have guidelines as to how, what's the maximum number of bedrooms you could have in an ADU based on the floor area ratio? So, how does this legislation affect that? Let's see. How does this impact non-dwelling accessory structures that are also on the same lot? Because I believe our current ordinance only, only allows for a certain number of structures, whether it's considered dwelling or non-dwelling. We also have a requirement that the ADUs must be in the rear 50% of the lot. So, does this override that? Now, can people have ADUs basically right up in the front yard? I don't know. I'm just throwing crazy ideas out there. Do we still have control over that? I mean, you know, we had a lot of discussion on ADUs just to get to that point. So, how, how does that change that? I asked Mr. Reimers about the, the utilities, the sewer and the water infrastructure. So, now we have this, what appears to be a ministerial 60-day review period. So, when you start involving multiple outside agencies that are going to provide opinions on the process, how does that cut into that 60-day review period? Does the, is the utility going to take 30 days, 60 days, 90 days to make a determination as to whether the infrastructure is truly adequate? Is there some master plan that we can kind of point to? That, that seems unclear to me. And really, the, the big question for me is really, from our end, and I know I'm not, again, I'm not expecting an answer now, is what's the sort of the timetable for developing our ordinance in tandem with all these things that are being kind of thrown in front of us? Because it took us some time to kind of put a lot of stuff together. So, I'm concerned with a similar issue that we ran into before as a council, is this question of what happens in the interim between a new state law coming into place, but prior to us actually formally adopting an ordinance? Is this, just, does it default to state law? What are those state laws? Like, how, how is that being, being, being addressed when people come in for, for applications? So, can't say I'm really looking forward to hearing the answers, but I guess inevitably, we, we have to get some answers from those. Thank you.
So, I, I can answer the councilman's last question. As Mr. Reimer said, they'll be coming to you in the month of February, or possibly early March, but probably February, with an urgency ordinance that will strip down what we have and essentially align with state law. There is a provision in the new state ADU laws that says that if your ordinance is not in compliance, then it's invalid. There are two ways to read that. One way is that any provision in your ordinance that is not, that, any provision in your ordinance that conflicts with state law, that provision is invalid. A broader way to read it, and I've, I've read the passage, is to say that if any provision in your ordinance is in conflict, your entire ordinance is invalid. It's absurd, but if you had somebody, a public interest group, that wanted to try to sue you on it, they could. So, what Mr. Reimers will bring is an urgency ordinance that will be in compliance with state law. At that point, his staff will begin working through the Planning Commission and then to you as council for many of the things that you've asked, design guidelines, other things that, based on his study, running it by our office, we believe that you still have control over, take it slowly through the commission and then to you to make sure that you get something that you can really stand behind. We don't want to rush the final ordinance for all the reasons you said, sir. The first ordinance took some time. You were careful about it. You were thoughtful about it. We want to give you that same time for the new ordinance. So, that's why you'll see the urgency ordinance that will not make everybody happy because it has to be stripped down and basically defer to the state in the short term to avoid any potential for a lawsuit, and then he'll bring you back what you really need. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Are there any other council questions or comments? Okay, I will entertain a motion.
Curious just to see what San Marino's going to do. Anyway.
Is there a motion, or is it receive and file?
Okay. I'll, I'll make a motion to file the report and receive the presentation and to direct the city manager to implement all required procedures and policies in alignment with new and applicable state laws.
Second.
Can I get a roll call, please?
Councilmember Mann?
Yes.
Councilmember Sternquist?
Yes.
Councilmember Yu?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Chavez?
Yes.
Mayor Fish?
Yes. Item 10, new business, none. Item 11, update from city manager.
Mayor Fish, member of the council. Ms. Lu talked about New Year coming up, but that's, and, and that is in conjunction with the Temple City Chinese-American Association as well, and of their group, and going on our third year with that festival, and look forward to having that. We'll have opening ceremonies. We'll get you the information, and we'll expect other elected officials from around the region to, to join us on that, on that festive day. Talked about our financial condition again. Our state auditor gave us a pretty good review, but again, in areas where we are challenged, revenue growth is one of the things that the state auditor pointed out, too, is where we're challenged, and that kind of pointed, we kind of pointed that out in the CAFR as well today. We're, we are working, we are working with our partners, the League of California Cities and others. I'll be attending the city managers' conference in about a week and a half or so, and this is going to be a major topic of, of, of discussion. If I hear of anything that's of interest, I'll make sure to let staff, city attorney, and the council know as we go through a pretty tumultuous time in terms of what the state is trying to do and how we have to navigate and still do our best to keep Temple City with a level of local control and the expressions that the community has made in what they are desiring their community to be on a go-forward basis. Thank you, Mayor Fish.
Thank you. Update from city attorney. Thank you. Update from city attorney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We've spoken in the past about Assembly Bill Five, which converts independent contractors into employees for a variety of labor code and other reasons. You probably all have read over the last couple of weeks. But a coalition representing truck drivers has now brought suit against that bill, or against the law. And we're expecting coalitions of other people who would prefer to remain independent contractors to join that suit. Something worth watching. As I previously said, we don't believe AB five has the large impact on public entities that we thought it might when it first was signed in September. But we're still going to keep an eye on the bill. Second, the governor has said in the last couple of weeks that homelessness issues continue to be primary on his mind. One potential piece of legislation that has been floated by his task force is one that would make local jurisdictions responsible for getting beds actually created. So they're, are, they're considering penalties against local jurisdictions that don't work towards the creation of beds to get people off the streets. There are other provisions that, that might seem helpful, but that is a provision, if that legislation moves forward, that would certainly have some financial impact on Temple City and other jurisdictions. And finally, Mr. Cook mentioned his conference. We just got our first notice about the city attorney's conference in May. It's in Southern California this year. And I anticipate that for the first time since two thousand and five, when I attended my first conference, I will actually go to every single session because I can't imagine missing anything in this current climate. And that has not been the case before this year. So I'll have a good report mid-May for you.
Thank you. Item thirteen, council reports regarding ad hocks or standing committee meetings. Nope. Okay, item fourteen, council items separate from city manager's regular agenda. Councilmember Mann.
Thank you, Mayor Fish. I do want to echo on what Mr. Cook had said. I am looking forward to the Lunar New Year celebration that's coming up this Saturday. I do want to give a shout out and commend the, a lot of the volunteers from the Temple City Chinese American Association. They tend to keep a low profile, but I know they've been working hard and pouring their time and energy into making this, making this event as festive as possible, bringing in sort of a multitude of cultural perspectives and traditions that many of our residents have experienced in the past. But with each new Lunar New Year, there's always something kind of unique. You know, year of the rat, there's different, different intricacies. And there's a unique story behind every, every animal that even I can't say I'm personally aware of. So looking forward to that celebration, hoping for good weather. Just one, one thing earlier that I, actually just earlier today, this is more of a question for, for our staff, is earlier today, there was a motion by the LA County Board of Supervisors to expand the Sheriff's Homeless Outreach Services team. Also, the acronym is HOST, H-O-S-T. Although the motion didn't specifically point to a quantitative number, but it did direct the county chief executive officer to report back for the upcoming fiscal year to look at whether there's funds available to expand that team. I'm wondering how that impacts us as a contract city, whether those... I don't, actually, I'll be honest, I don't even know if those services are currently being utilized right now. How, how does that apply specifically for, for our city? And whether there's a way to maybe better understand that and leverage it? My understanding of, of the host teams is that they offer, these teams are special, specifically trained to approach homeless individuals and encampments along areas like the flood control channels or any other place that may require that. And as we know, the homeless initiative has been a big thing from the county's end. So I'm just curious how that really links together in the big picture. But also, how does that, is that something that we, as a contract city, could kind of either leverage or be a part of? Or if, if indeed there is really no connection back to us at all, I'd also like to get some more information about that.
Sure. And we'll be, we'll provide that generally. It's similar to the MET team, the Met, Mental Evaluation Team. It's part of our contract as a whole that we get. We're not necessarily billed for it individually, but it is, their demands are throughout the county. So it's a county service, provided countywide, but is available to contract cities as well. We'll get some more information to see how we, we, as contract cities has asked for expansions of the host and MET teams, as well as contract cities and the Contract Cities Association has been advocating that for several years as well. So we'll get some more information though, sir.
Yeah. And just one kind of noteworthy item in that motion was they, they talk about the ability of host teams and MET teams to actually track individuals and report back on actual results, like whether someone had been connected with housing, transitional housing, or whether they've received some sort of help. It's very general and vague, but you know, as it's being fleshed out, I think that's really something I think a lot of people will be interested in, in learning about. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sternquist?
Just, yeah, right before I came to the meeting, I received a text message from our Mayor Protem of Duarte. And he asked if the city was doing any public outreach, especially with our heavy, heavy Asian population regarding the, is it coronavirus?
Who is the Mayor Protem of Duarte?
Sam King. And it went out to, I think there were about ten cities that were listed in the text message. And it, John Fasana from Duarte responded, and Maggie Clark from Rosemead, and quite a few others. I didn't get a chance to read them all. But they were just saying, well, we don't want to scare the public, some of the responses were. But we're just trying to make people aware, especially with a lot of, millions are expected to travel during the new Lunar New Year to China and back. So they're just telling people to be very vigilant. And I think there's, LAX is, has started screening now, I believe. So I think there are some things in progress, but just, there's been four hundred cases now and nine deaths. It seems that every week it's just increasing. I just thought I'd bring it up, just knowing that we do have a heavy Asian population that might be traveling to China and back. So just be vigilant. And I, I guess the symptoms are very similar to pneumonia. So a dry cough, high fever, get to the doctor and just have them check you out.
Thank you.
That's it. Councilmember Yu?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to second what Councilmember Mann had said, that, well, the Lunar New Year Festival, well, Lunar New, first of all, wishing everybody a happy Lunar New Year. And also, I mean, we, we've been, the, the Chinese Association of Temple City has been really, been very, very helpful volunteering their service. And I, I don't think we can thank them enough for that, so. We just want to second that. And then one last piece was, it has been mentioned that the, the county's been really focused, and the city of Los Angeles has, had really been focusing the last year, and, and even more so in the last few months on homeless and transitional housing. So for those of us who are interested in what's happening, I think the, the next few months, we're starting to see a lot of transitional housing being finished, completed. And, and folks from the street will have a chance to move into some of these new housing. A few days ago, the, the governor had made available some RV trailers. So the county's going to try to get some of those as well. But I think the news is that so far, the city of Los Angeles and the county of Los Angeles have been focusing on locating these transitional housing on county land. They have not been like forcing it on cities or anything unless, you know, we like to participate in their program. Just want to say that.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Chavez?
Thank you. I just, I know all of us have seen the devastation in Australia and the fires. And some of you may be wondering how our sister city, Hoxbury, has fared in all of this. And I'm happy to report that so far, they are doing well. They've been pretty lucky with the winds, and they haven't been affected too much by the smoke, although many of the surrounding areas have been. Fortunately, we have a few of our Hoxbury friends in town right now. Couple of them are actually staying with us, and I think they're glad to be in some cooler weather. It's their summertime right now, as you know, and that obviously contributes to the...
Cleaner air.
To the problem that they're having. But, you know, keep them in your prayers. And, you know, like I said, they're, they're, so far, they're doing well. And hopefully it'll remain the same. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I too am looking forward to Lunar New Year. It's always a wonderful event. Also, remember, end of February, Memorial Festival time? Our biggest signature event. So mark your calendars. And I'd also like to thank staff for very successful Burgers and Brass. I'm hoping that we possibly can have it next year. It was very well-attended. Maybe not on a Neighborhood Watch night, but it didn't seem to affect it. I know I got many compliments and lots and lots and lots of people and lots of burgers. So it was a good event. So I'd like to thank them. Okay, any additional comments? Steve?
Mayor Fish, Mayor Protemper Chavez, councilmembers. Councilmember Sternquist made mention of the coronavirus. I just learned tonight that it's spread into South Korea, into Vietnam, into other areas of China. And they've had about another twenty-five hundred cases of it in, in where it began in China. And they don't know how many cases in South Korea, but they know it's there. It's a very dangerous virus. At one point, we had a coronavirus vaccine for our animals. It's outdone that vaccine. The dangers here are, we got a measles outbreak. And if it combines, it would be very, very hard to defeat it. You put the measles with Corona, Corona's just going to make measles worse because coronavirus affects our bronchial pathways, our lungs, the same thing what measles does. So it's just going to make it twice as hard to defeat. One thing I did was I protected myself with not only a flu vaccine, but a pneumonia vaccine and a bronchitis vaccine, which is relatively new. I got a compromised immune system. People with compromised immune systems get that because it just may protect them from that. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Any other public comments? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments, and thank you very much. We are adjourned.